East Hampton Town Board, we are live.
Thank you, Jason. Good morning and welcome everyone to the East Hampton Town Board Work Session of Tuesday, May twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Carol, if you could please read the roll call.
President.
Councilmember Lee.
Present.
Councilmember Rogers.
Present.
Councilmember Carl Pima.
Present.
Supervisor Bart Gonzalez.
Present.
If we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance stipulates that the United States of America and two Republican Republicans, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So this morning, we will open up with public portion, and we ask you to kindly keep your comments to three minutes, and that'll be followed by our work session topics, of which there are three. The first is the Citizens Police Academy, and that will be with Lieutenant Chelsea Tierney and Lieutenant Ken Alversa. Then that'll be followed by a presentation on proposed small cell plan from Crown Castle, and Tina Laguerre will do the introduction, and Paul Costa, the networking, the network permitting manager, will give the presentation. And then lastly, we have the litter action committee recommendation, and Tina Plissette and Chris Ganich will be presenting. That'll be followed by liaison reports and resolutions. So we are going to start with public comment. Carol, is there anyone signed in? No. Is there anyone here that would like to address the board? Kate, Jason, is there anyone on the line?
Yes, we have one caller on the line. I will unmute right now.
Thank you.
Hello, caller ending, three, two, four, four. You're on the air.
Oh, good morning. Hi, my name is Martin Drew. Yeah, I'm calling in again about my comments I made at the last effort to speak in public about the situation ongoing at Maidstone Acres and Rita Cantina in Spring, also our public park access road. So I just wanted to bring a few things to your attention. It's been a situation that they lost their, they had an approval of July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, gave them eighteen months to get into compliance with the situation down there. It has expired since January twenty twenty-five, and we've been pursuing a stop-work order with the code enforcement department head, Martin Colatton, but he seems to refuse to want to do that to a stop-work order when they're outside of their expectations, where the restaurant is supposed to have an outdoor dining permit annually, and right now you need a current C of O to get that. So we're wondering how they're going to continue to operate if they are outside the expectations of the eighteen months to get their C of O, which now they do not have. And apparently, let's not get too enforcement, this is where a stop-work order would take care of that. But then here's another thought I had when I had to discuss this situation with our highway superintendent, Steve Lynch, since the police and officials want to tell us that you can't do any enforcement down there because the roads aren't lined correctly. I was just led to believe that I think Mr. Lynch is taking care of the lining, so then the police department can start enforcing the parking issues, which are the gorilla in the room, which requires thirty-six off-site parking spots to have a restaurant. So we're wondering how they're ever going to get a C of O. But here's the interesting point. We just discovered in the deed that from nineteen eleven, that the access point starts out at Three Mile Harbor Road, and the carriage way goes into the park, which is Maidstone Park Road from Three Mile Harbor Road. So the road name is incorrect, and it comes from the gated piece in the deed. So it was always a controlled access point. And I have a letter here from the chief of police that tells me, and I want to thank the chief. The chief has been working with us to try to get temporary signs down there, facilitate the problems, but it comes down to the fact that it's an emergency situation, a dangerous situation, when you can't get through there with a fire truck on a Friday or Saturday night because it's become unbearable. But it says here at the closing of the letter, additionally, Maidstone Park, and this is from the chief himself, Mr. Sarlo, Chief Sarlo, additionally, Maidstone Park itself is not a resident-only parking, nor is it a restricted access. However, parking does require a town beach parking permit, as per town code twenty forty-two forty-point-seven-nine. So that being said, technically, the access road, which is the largest floodlot probably in the town of East Hampton, is part and parcel of the park. So even beyond that road, you need a town beach permit. So maybe it is time for us to talk about speaking to a controlled access point, like a booth, like we have in every other popular beach, so we can control the people that are supposed to be in there or not. And now it's become a free-for-all for diner parking, when I just want to remind everyone, everyone wants to act like there was a seventy-year pre-existing condition with the land that's to the right of that facility, which was a vacant residential lot. So we took the vacant residential lot and added it into the footprint of the commercial footprint, and no one ever spoke to the fact that that needed to become off-site parking. Instead, you've encouraged outside dining above septic tanks that were now installed in that land to support the restaurant, which was a big issue. And to be reminded, those septic tanks are apparently off-gas, because we had a family member had some dinner down there, and apparently they off-gassed while they were having their meal, and he told me it was so disgusting, he wanted to vomit his food on the ground. So you have a border health issue, and now we have this parking dilemma. So I'd like to remind you, in nineteen sixty-nine, somebody on the building rolls called in to complain about the parking across the street. So then I got into looking into the deed, and it says, everyone's allowed to access that park, come and go, on foot or by vehicle, unobstructed. So that means the illegal parking lot across the way is illegal entirely. It shouldn't be there.
Martin, we need you to wrap it up.
Well, it's a safety issue, ma'am, and we're hoping you guys can wrap it up instead of dragging this out for fifteen years like you did the truck beach issue. So we're hoping that you guys can get to learning and digesting the facts and acting accordingly, because it's become embarrassing for everyone involved. So since we're having problems at our local level, we're taking it to the county level, and they've advised us to take this to the governor.
There's no one else on the line.
Okay. Thank you, Martin. All right. Is there anyone, we'll do one more time in the room. Anyone like to address the board? Okay, so we're going to move on to our first topic, which is the Citizens Police Academy. Ian and I were fortunate enough last Wednesday to attend the graduation of the Citizens Police Academy, and we were so moved that we asked Lieutenant Tierney and Lieutenant Alversa to come and talk to us about it. So welcome, Lieutenant Tierney.
Good morning to the members of the town board, community leaders, and residents. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. In the introduction, obviously, my name is Chelsea Tierney, and I'm proud to serve as an instructor for the East Hampton Town Police Department's Citizens Police Academy, a program I believe is one of the most impactful tools we have for building genuine lasting connections between law enforcement and the community we serve. The Citizens Police Academy is more than a series of classes. It's a bridge between law enforcement and the community we serve. Our goal is simple. It's to provide transparency, foster really works. From patrol procedures and investigations to use of force and community policing strategies, participants see the complexities, challenges, and responsibilities that come with wearing the badge. As an instructor, I've had the privilege of guiding participants through this journey. We've had business owners, students, retirees, and everyday residents walk through our doors. Many come in with questions and sometimes with skepticism, but they leave with greater understanding, respect, and a newfound partnership with law enforcement. This academy is not about public relations, as I said before, it is about transparency, education, and mutual respect. It gives residents a chance to see not just what we do, but why we do it. And it gives us, as officers and instructors, the chance to listen, reflect, and grow through the eyes of our community. Our department is committed to community engagement, and the Citizens Police Academy is one of our most effective tools. It's a proactive way to strengthen our relationships, break down barriers, and ensure our community sees us not just as enforcers of the law, but as partners in public service. We're grateful for the town's continued support of this program, and I encourage anyone who hasn't experienced it yet to consider joining us. Together, we can continue building a safer, stronger, and more connected community. Thank you for your time, and when we're done, we're always happy to answer any more questions.
Thank you, Lieutenant Tierney. Lieutenant Alversa, it's the first time I've had to say that publicly.
Well, it's only day one, so.
Pardon me, everyone. I hope you don't mind that I'm interjecting. I just want to let everyone know. It seems that cable vision is having a problem with our signal, but I want to let everyone know that YouTube is one hundred percent operational and that everything is still being recorded. That's all.
Beautiful. Thank you, Jason.
So for those of you that don't know me, my name is Ken Alversa, and I was recently promoted to lieutenant, so today is literally my first day. So thank you very much for having me here. Myself and Chelsea were the two points of contact for the Citizens Police Academy, and this is the second year that we were fortunate enough to run the program with the support of both the chief and the board. We hope to continue to do that. We could not do and have the success that we've had with the academy without the citizens that reside here in East Hampton. Both last year and this year, the group of citizens that we had were terrific and really embraced the program and took everything in for what it was worth. And we definitely changed some viewpoints based on what they were able to see and the training that we go through from a police officer's eyes. So being able to put the citizens, the residents of East Hampton in a police officer's shoes and show them the emergency vehicle operations course, the firing range, the firearms simulator, DWI simulations, the laws of arrest and search and seizure, is a tremendous amount of information, and that's just touching on a few subjects. But we are grateful for the opportunity to put the program on. We look forward to continued success with the board and the chief's support, and we thank you guys for always having the police departments back and the community's back. So thank you.
Thank you, Kenny. So at the graduation, there were two, I guess, commencement speeches that were given. So I'd like to welcome, have Paula come up, because there, you know, there was those of us in the room that got to hear Paula and Barbara speak, and it's worth everybody hearing. So welcome, Paula. Thank you for coming.
Right, thank you. Good morning. So as you previously said, my name is Paula Lozano, one of the students from this year's Citizens Police Academy, and I would like to thank the East Hampton Town Police Department for giving us that experience. Betsy Hodges, an American politician, once said, true public safety requires a collaboration between law enforcement and the community. Why do I think this quote is relevant today? Well, many of you might find this statement interesting, but I was raised in another country, and while growing up, I was told not to trust the law enforcement there. So after taking these classes and having a look at the job the officers do and a lot of what they go through, I can only say I feel safe and admire the great work they do for our community. And that pairs up with the quote, because without having a connection with the community, it could be really difficult for them to work in case of any emergency. So I would like to thank the chief for bringing the Citizens Academy back, for opening your doors and giving us the opportunity to deeply understand the complexities of law enforcement in the town. I believe it's a great way to build a bridge between the community and the brave men and women who serve it. I would also like to thank Detective Orlando, Detective Sokolowski, for the information and activities they provided for us during the lessons they gave. Officer Gonzalez, for his great presentation as a new police officer and his amazing acting skills during our play role lesson. That was really fun. Officer Gerken, for the ride-along experience, and all of the officers, part of the special units, which showed us what they're about and what they do. And last, but no least, I would like to thank Lieutenant Tierney and Sergeant, sorry, Lieutenant Alversa, congratulations, for taking their time preparing every lesson for their road trips to West Hampton, for all the activities, and for making this experience fun and unforgettable for us. I admire you and those two. May I add, Lieutenant Tierney, as someone that now wants to become a police officer, you're such a great inspiration, because I see a successful woman in a hard field, which is not usually for us ladies. To conclude, I would also like to thank my classmates for making the learning environment so great, and I am kind of sad these ten weeks have come to an end. All I can say is I had so much fun, and I will be recommending the Citizens Academy to everyone I know. Shout out to Barbara for making them unique. And hopefully, the department has all their volunteer groups, classes, programs, anything really, that we can sign up for, to be in touch with them soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. And you did mention that you were interested now in becoming a police officer.
Yes, correct.
I hope I have the privilege of attending your graduation from Suffolk County Police
Thank you so much.
Academy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. And then the second commencement speaker was Barbara Moss. So Barbara, if you could please join us. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you so much, Paula. Thank you for that. It was just a very emotional graduation, and I want to thank Ian and Kathy for being there, acknowledging the fellow graduates, the officers, and Chief Sarlo. I have a few notes. I'm sorry. I hate to look at them, but I just don't want to forget. The graduation was wonderful indeed. And you might ask, how did a child of the sixties land up here? Because I asked myself, you saw the future. I'm not going to say I'm the past, because what Chelsea and Kenneth, sorry for the first names, we became so familiar. We learned so much. What I hope I impart here today is it's not just words, it's feelings, it's actions, and it's reality that you have made possible, and I certainly hope you continue supporting this effort. I really want to share with you, it wasn't just lectures, as you heard. It was an immersive, incredible experience through policing, things that we had no idea about. I never thought or imagined that I, at this age, would be able to do some of the things we did. And it was pretty scary at times. I never want to ride in the back of a cruiser at a high-speed chase again. But boy, was that eye-opening. Some of the things, I just want to say so much to the brilliance and dedication of Lieutenants Tierney and Alversa, we can say double lieutenant now, for their brilliance and leadership. They made this experience and gave us an understanding, an intimacy of the lives of your police officers to keep this community safe. We entered as a group with skepticism, preconceived notions, and certainly trepidation. When we left, we were a group that had a bond that is just remarkable for me to have met so many wonderful young men and women of the future and from other countries. And I think that's probably, probably one of the most stunning things for me. There was an intensity in this experience. They managed to take years of learning and push it into ten weeks, once a week for three hours, and it was an immersive experience that made us experience things, and they encouraged questions. They didn't just tolerate it, they encouraged it, and they put it in very creative ways. So nothing about this was expected, and I want to thank you for that. The patrol officers shared their daily lives and realities. Now, we've all seen pull over and you say, can we see your, can we see your license, please? Well, now we got to experience that. And I have to say, Officer Paul Gonzalez, who's new to the force, he was the best Oscar-performing impaired driver you could ever imagine. There was also the dive team, ESU, and things that most of us never know existed, and we are very, very grateful to know that these men and women put their lives on the line, make decisions that are clearly life-altering for everybody, and they do it with a passion that is, I can only say, was remarkable to see. Most importantly, we are now the proud graduates. Thank you very much. And I want to ask you and hope that you will continue to support this for the community, because as you learned, it's not just an attitude, that they have taught us to be what I consider citizen advocates for this community at a very difficult time for this community. So thank you very much. That's it.
Thank you, Barbara. So I don't know if the board has questions for lieutenants.
I just would say, lieutenants, thank you very much doing this program. I went to the last year's graduation. It's a fantastic program. And, you know, to Paula's point, at a time where elsewhere in the country we're seeing trust eroded between law enforcement and the public, this program is so phenomenal to actually show, you know, how important that bond is, and also to give insight into your lives. It's a unique lifestyle that PD takes on. It's a huge sacrifice, and, you know, I am incredibly grateful for what all the department does. So thank you.
All right.
Yeah, I would just reiterate, you know, reiterate, I said it the other night, but thank you so much, Chelsea and Ken and Chief Sarlo and all the other officers. It was a really professional program, and the engagement I saw from the graduates was really impressive and just grateful for everybody. It was a significant investment of time, obviously, and I think, as Tom says, very important. I just want to say thank you.
So my comment is, when's the next one? And how can I sign up? Because it really is, it sounds like an incredible experience for people to get inside of your lives and what you do every day. And I think I encourage everyone possible to be able to take this Citizens Police Academy, because it's an incredible experience that you can't get anywhere else.
I also, I should have added, you know, Barbara and Paula, it was, both of your speeches to today and at the graduation were really impressive, and it was nice to see your fellow graduates looking up to you. It was just a really nice thing for me to see. So thank you.
So Kate, to your point, we do plan on running the Citizens Academy every spring. Generally, it starts first or second week of March, and it runs through about the second week of May. We will have the applications up on the town website and also on our website. So they'll get updated. We do accept applications now, so the application that's up now, we will accept. We just put it aside, and then we'll start giving phone calls and emails next spring to let people know when they've been accepted.
That's wonderful.
So they can email stuff to either myself or Lieutenant Alversa.
So what was so interesting is that both you and Paula said that this was an opportunity to build a bridge between the community and law enforcement. But I think what also came out of it is that it became kind of a recruitment tool, did it not? I think you got some interest from folks who took the class that want to pursue.
We did, both from this year and last year. So that was sort of an unexpected benefit, the recruitment tool. So it's excellent.
Right. Recruiting folks that live and work here, which is important. So thank you for, I know this, I sprung this on you last minute, Wednesday night after the graduation ceremony, and I'm grateful for all of you. Paula, thank you for coming in today. You had, you brought your two babies with you, and we appreciate that. And Barbara, thank you again for coming. And I think people will be, you know, filling out that application and trying to get in line, because it's an extraordinary class that you offered. Thank you. And thank you to the chief.
Thank you for all you do. Thank you.
Okay, so now we're moving on, and we have a presentation now from Crown Castle on a proposed small cell plan. I know, Tina, you wanted to do an introduction. I think, Jason, there are two people on the line that should be, you could bring into the meeting.
Yes, absolutely.
One is Eric Chance, and the other is Susan, and Susan Raybold, please.
They are being joined in right now.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
I guess, Jason, let me know when you have them, and I will get going.
I'm just double-checking that they have the feed. Eric Chance is in, confirmed. And Susan, if you could just give us a one, two, and let us know that you're here. I'd appreciate it. She may have stepped away from her computer for a moment while we let her in, so I'm not exactly sure, but Eric is here.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. I'm going to get going. Hello, Town Board Supervisor, Deputy Supervisor. Thanks for the opportunity to speak with you today about wireless planning in the town. I'm going to give a very brief overview and then hand it to representatives from Crown Castle, including Paul Costa, and they're going to walk you through the detail of their program to create new wireless infrastructure in unserved areas of the town or underserved areas of the town. I'm joined by key members of the staff at the planning department who work on the wireless program. Eric, who's attending virtually, recently returned to the planning department and was one of the architects of the wireless program we have in place today, and he's resuming management of it now that he's returned. Hi, Susan. Susan's now here. Susan is our technical consultant from Cityscape. They also worked closely to develop the wireless master plan and the code, and they perform the technical reviews that are so key to ensuring that the facilities are appropriately adhering to federal code. Chris Decker's in the audience as well. Chris has been working on managing the wireless applications for several months, and will be working with Eric as the program continues. Ed Schnell's not here today, but I also just want to reference
He's right, he's stuck in the back.
Amazing resource who has really contributed so much to the wireless facilities in the town. As the board knows, the town's been working for years to improve wireless telecommunications infrastructure regulations and planning. In twenty twenty-two, the town updated the code to modernize the regulatory framework for facilities in the town. This brought the code into compliance with federal standards, streamlined the review approach, and also addressed how we regulate placement and design of the facilities in the town right-of-way. In April twenty twenty-four, the town issued the Wireless Telecommunications Master Plan, which is a roadmap for the future of wireless infrastructure in the town. The vision for that plan was to improve wireless service, enhance access where community members live and travel. Importantly, the plan analyzed existing infrastructure, coverage, capacity, and identified gaps in coverage and areas where we wanted to improve the service. The vision of the plan was based on the technical expertise of our consultants and also the town staff, but also benefited from significant community input. Surveys were done, community presentations were conducted, and the boards obviously guided the development. The vision in the plan incorporated not only infrastructure, but balancing that with community character and aesthetics. Both the plan and the code lay out a tiered structure for the implementation of wireless facilities. Tier ones, just to refresh everybody's memory, are new or replacement poles in the town right-of-way. These are the preferred type in our code, right? They kind of have the most, the lightest footprint. Tier twos are colocations on eligible support structures, like existing buildings where wireless facilities are placed. And tier three are the larger cell towers, the macro sites. The plan and the code also lay out a review process, which must conform to federal timelines. Tier one and tier two projects do not require staff reports or planning board review. They are administrative permits. They receive a technical review from Cityscape and a design and aesthetic review from the town planning staff before a permit is issued. Importantly, federal regulations restrict the type of review and the timelines we have to adhere to when we're doing the reviews. The town's not allowed to prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting deployment of infrastructure facilities such as these when providers are addressing gaps in their service and coverage. However, our review process, while following these guidelines, allows us to articulate our design preferences and seek upgrades that are in alignment with our community and our aesthetic goals. And that leads me back to this presentation. Crown Castle's proposing a program of tier-one facilities. Again, those are the lightest footprint facilities in the right-of-way, the types that are preferred in our code. The program will serve to address some of the largest coverage gaps identified in the wireless master plan, who determine which providers site on their infrastructure. And we have asked them to ensure that the designs allow for multiple providers. So we wanted to ask them to present to the board to raise community awareness and also provide the board's guidance on the program. We have worked with the designers on Crown Castle and town staff to give them input on what types of designs we want to see. So we've got schematics of the types of facilities we can expect to be created with this program, and we do want to hear the board's feedback and input on the program and the expected design types it'll bring to the town. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the board, to Paul, unless the board has questions or okay. Thank you so much.
Tina, are you going to run the presentation, or is there someone here to run it?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Welcome, Paul.
Welcome. Thank you.
You might want to turn them, yeah, that's great.
Better, or?
Yep.
Good afternoon, councilmembers, supervisor. My name is Paul Costa, the network permitting manager at Crown Castle. Tina really described what we're going to do today, but I'll just give a brief introduction of the Crown Castle, kind of show you how we design these networks, what we're proposing as well, and how it would improve that coverage. Obviously, wireless coverage in the Hamptons is a big issue. Each summer, it seems to be more and more popular. Last summer, residents were putting antennas on their cars to stay connected. But as Tina mentioned, the town has been proactive in trying to address those issues, creating the master plan. Creating the master plan is a great thing as well as adopting code to allow for those small cells as well. So Crown Castle, we are an infrastructure, communication infrastructure provider. We build and maintain towers, small cells, and fiber networks that enable connectivity for carriers, schools, businesses, and hospitals. We have 40 offices throughout the United States. Our services are monitored 24/7. And we have longstanding partnerships with our communities we work with. On Long Island, we've been on Long Island for about 15 years. We have over 500 miles of fiber, 1,000 small cells. We've built 168 towers and an office in Melville with over 120 employees. And what sets Crown apart is that we are a neutral host provider. So we build shared infrastructure for carriers to access. Rather than having to build four towers for each carrier or four small cells, we build one site where multiple carriers can access. So reduces the clutter and impact on the community. When a carrier wants to improve coverage or capacity, they'll typically have two ways to do this. Traditionally, it's a tower, which is the large monopole that we see over here, sometimes disguised as a ugly tree. Or, and they're higher powered, they have a coverage area about one to three miles. The other option is a small cell. They're less, they're less visible. They're built typically in the right of way and attached to existing utility poles or streetlights. So then the equipment is designed to blend in with the existing infrastructure. So they're, you don't notice that they're there. And this is how we design our networks. So it always starts with a request from a customer. In this case, T-Mobile has come to us and said, we need to improve our coverage for our customers in the Hamptons. So we'll work with them, understanding their needs, what they're looking at, and design a network around what technologies are available and what their needs are. In this case, we decided to deploy small cells to meet their coverage needs. So once we identify how we're gonna build this, the challenging part is where we can actually place our equipment. So this is where your utilities and jurisdictional requirements come into play. P S and G and Verizon have strict limitations on where we can place our pole, our equipment on their poles. So while you may see tons of utility poles in the right of way, most of those might not be eligible to attach a small cell to. For instance, poles with transformers aren't usable. A pole with a riser is not usable. And they have strict clearances between power lines and communication lines that we have to hear to. And then, as Tina mentioned, the town passed a new code and there's different requirements there that are designed to minimize the impact on the community. So we follow those as well. Oh, sorry. And this goes to, and those regulations kind of limit to what, where we can place our poles. So we have 100 new poles designed that will go in the right of way next to existing poles. 18 are attached to existing poles and we're still pending designs on 71 of those.
Well, can I just ask, so when you're saying the new poles, they're not gonna be, it's not gonna be a double pole, right? If there's gonna be a distance from the pole that's already there.
Correct. The new poles, per the utility regulations too, also have to, they, we can't place them on the same pole line. So typically, they're placed either across the street, the new poles. Yeah, and we know double poles aren't issues, so.
We have a code against it, thanks to Councilman Lee's.
And this is just speaks to some of the jurisdictional requirements. As Tina mentioned, we are tier one, so we're in the public right of way. And these, just some of the regulations we have to follow. For instance, there's distance between our sites that we have to maintain, distance between residential homes, where we can place it along property lines. So it really, it's good guidelines of us to follow and limits the impact of the community. Excellent. So this, we take all that and we have to design sites. And so you go next two slides. One more. And this is an example of how we actually have to design the site. So RRF engineers will say, we need to cover this area. And we'll then look at what infrastructure is there. So there's three poles in this area. Unfortunately, pole six and eight have transformers, they're not usable. Pole seven, technically, we can use that one, but it's right by a resident's driveway and we just don't want to place that and have that visual impact on the residence. So in this case, we chose to build a new pole across that pole line right next to the sidelines of two properties, as well as away from any driveways or residence view sheds. Now, the big question of what are these gonna look like? So we have, the small cells are made up of two components, main components. A shroud, which is where all the equipment is held, that's placed on the side of the pole, and antenna that's in the middle of the pole, at top of the pole, which transmits all the signals and receives them. Our shrouds are designed right now to hold two to three carriers. So once we install this, we can simply place the carriers and it won't be additional construction. We have two configurations that we place on utility poles based on the utility regulations. The first is a communication zone attachment. That's where the antenna is placed below the primary power at about 24 to 26 feet. And the pole top is placed on top of the pole. And we have a collar that is on top of the pole to make it seamless from the pole top to the top of the antenna. Next slide. And this is just a schematic of showing just how busy some of these poles are with different communication and power wires, as well as the clearances that we need to maintain for those requirements. Obviously, we understand there's different parts of town. Some, you know, had different aesthetics, some don't even have wooden utility poles. So we designed some additional sites that have more of a stealth option. The first one is a ground concealment base, where the cabinet is placed at the bottom of the base of the pole and all the wiring and cabling is concealed in the pole and up to the antenna. The next option is similar to the standard design, but it's an integrated metal shroud into the metal pole. And wires are all concealed in that one as well. And these are typically 42 feet tall. And this is just a schematics of what those look like, different heights and sizes. So. So this is T-Mobile's current coverage with the macro towers that they have. You can see around the macro towers, they have strong, reliable coverage. That's considered that five bars and you can use that consistently. Outside of those areas, you may have some coverage, but it's not reliable and not strong. In certain areas, you don't have any coverage up in the north, in the East Hampton and the Springs. So with the new small cells, as we place those, place those on air, you can see we cover most of those areas now that have no coverage and filling in those gaps and providing those additional, additional coverage areas.
Paul, can I ask the question? So this is for interior coverage. As we know, interior coverage goes through the walls compared to coverage within cars.
Yeah.
It's outside coverage because there are different levels of coverage.
Correct.
And just to be clear, this is for T-Mobile right now?
This, yeah, the T-Mobile is considered the anchor tenant and this is their coverage. But I mean, in my experience, once we put these, more carriers will come online.
And you can hold up to three?
Mm-hmm, correct.
Okay, because you had mentioned that two to three carriers holds two to three. Every one of them will be able to hold three carriers, correct?
Yeah. And this is just showing the locations of the proposed nodes. Most of them are in town of East Hampton's right of way. I understand some of the right of way might be private, but as we submit applications, we can definitely work with the town to determine that and work with either property owners or readjust the sites. Some are in the state as well as Suffolk County right of way. And we work with them on all the permitting that is required. They're in, sorry, and most of these sites are in East Hampton or Springs just due to their size as well as the coverage needs that's there. And a large part of this project is we need to bring fiber to these sites to make them active. So we would build them on wooden utility poles, similar to how cable or internet provider brings it to your home. In some cases, we have to do underground digging and we work with the town on the permits and what is needed to complete those digs as well. Here's our timeline. We've begun, began construction of our fiber already. That should continue for the next couple of months. We hope to submit applications relatively soon for a couple of sites and build, start building in the next few months after the reviews are done. Our goal is to have 129 of these sites on air by November and December of this year, with the remaining sites going on air in 2026 and 2027. And in the future, we anticipate additional carriers. So in summary, we have 189 sites total. Right now, it's with T-Mobile, but it has potential for three carriers. Our fiber construction has begun and we have different pole designs based on the different areas of the town and the different types of styles we need to build.
So you're gonna be deciding the design style that works in each community and each?
We would present and then I think we would work with the Planning Department on determining which one is best suited there, yeah.
What is the range of the small towers?
It's 500 to 1,000 feet and.
Okay. And as we kind of determine the locations, are we working to inform residents in that area that they're going into that area? Or is that kind of just a bonus that they're gonna one day find out they have coverage on it?
They, all of a sudden, their bars show up, right?
Exactly, yeah.
I don't believe there's a notification aspect of, in the code, but we can certainly work with the town and determining the best approach for that.
Does this also increase capacity or is it at the same capacity levels that we have now on the bigger towers?
This is a coverage play for T-Mobile. So you, I mean, you could offload, depending on where, right? You could improve the coverage of the towers by offloading some of that traffic on the small cells. But right now, this is T-Mobile doing a coverage play.
Crown Castle did the work on Napier Stretch, didn't they? State, you had a contract with the state?
The state, yeah, so we, yeah, so we have a contract with the state that manages it right of way. So we basically approve permits for the state right of way.
Because in the off season, you can drive now across the stretch, at least with AT&amp;T, and maintain a call, which you couldn't do before. And from what I understood, it was because of the single cell.
Yeah, there's small cells along there.
Small cells along there.
Yeah.
So the initial geographic area we've seen is kind of focused around the Springs and area. They have plans to extend this elsewhere in the town. I know there's kind of dead spots across the town, so.
There's a lot in Northwest, if you can see. Both sides of Three Mile Harbor.
Yeah, this is their current design. I know they're made, I think there's some north and like east and west, but those contracts haven't been signed and not, they haven't really been solidified with us yet. But I think once these go on and they see the coverage improving, there's gonna, a need to build more as well.
Right, yeah, and I'd certainly know Montauk down by the dock area, Colloden. There's, there's a lot of dead spots down there too, so for future thoughts.
So T-Mobile, I tried to, you know, understand what share of the market they have, like in the town of East Hampton. Obviously, those numbers aren't available. But you look at, is T-Mobile and Sprint now together or?
Yes.
So, so generally, T-Mobile Sprint has about a third of the, of the users. Is that fair to say?
I don't know exact numbers in the Hamptons, but typically, yeah.
Well, that's nationally from what the research that I did. It had about 29% cover, you know, market share together. Whereas Verizon was at about 37 and AT&amp;T was at 33. But I was just curious, out here, you know, I know when we got our cell phones, I don't know, 20 years ago, I mean, how long have we been using cell phones? You know, the, we were told, well, if you want to have coverage out here, get AT&amp;T. So I'm just wondering what the, I know from conversations with Susan from Cityscape, that's proprietary information, they can't share that. But since T-Mobile Sprint, from what I understand, is a smaller part of the market share out here, really encouraging Verizon and AT&amp;T. That's, that's the game changer, I think, in Springs and Northwest and where you're looking to expand. So what, what is your play? How do you get incentivized the other carriers to come online?
Sure, I guess, once we build, right, and carry, I think carriers are trying to see what's happening. I have built thousands of these sites on Long Island. Typically, once you have one site up, carriers do co-locate on those existing sites. So I anticipate, this is my own professional opinion, but that once we build these, additional carriers will come online. And I'm, just to speak to T-Mobile, I mean, Verizon publicly has lost 4,000 subscribers last, 400,000 subscribers last year. T-Mobile is growing, they grew 432. So, I mean, this is an attempt to, T-Mobile to kind of come into this area and improve their coverage. And if residents want coverage, they can also get T-Mobile as well. Gives them third option there.
Just talking about maintenance of the towers. I know with some of our larger towers, we have challenges with, with the providers to actually maintain the towers. With these, what would the process be with regards to that?
Sure, so we will maintain them. We have, each site has, I think, it's about twice a year, they're scheduled for annual maintenance. We monitor them 24/7. So if there's any issues or a pole goes down, there's power loss, we're aware of that. So we're constantly keeping those up. And we have strict SLAs with the carrier to make sure if something goes down, we have to improve the, bring the service back up and quick, quickly.
Thank you. So I've been a proponent of small cell technology since day one here. Part of the code and the change of the code that we moved on to was to bring small cell technology. There's a lot of federal regulations that the town has and shot clocks. I appreciate your pre-application coming in here and discussing this with the town board because you could actually just submitted application and the town would be on its heels right now. Our Planning Department is there, Eric is here. But by putting this out there right now, it's the first blush to the general community to see how this mesh network of repeaters, if we want to call it, can come in and actually help the whole entire community as a whole. I think one of my discussions here is to the aesthetics and what we're getting right now. There's difference, I've always said they look like kegs on the top of a, on top of a tower. But we also have different panels then too. We have larger panels that you're seeing on the stretch. We have kegs over by, and around Fort Pond, down maybe in, even in Marine Boulevard in Amagansett. Recently, I'm starting to see smaller tri antennas out there then too. I've seen many at Crown Castle. If I actually want to go on my cellphone, I go around all different locations and take picture of your installations on there. Some of them are a little bit more traditional, they might be used to see here on wooden poles. But some of them are more sleeker and steel on there then too. I, I more like the shrouds that would have the collars that would be fully baked in with a larger bulbous bottom on there then too. I think that would actually be a little bit more resilient to some of our weather conditions that we might have here with the salt that might actually help you in the end. But also at the same time, less intrusive to what some of our residents might be able to see. If they were the encapsulated design on there, would they be of a metal or would they be of a wood design that the bulbous bottom might be metal? Can you give us a little bit more design play on, on these ones here?
Yeah, you're referring to this one over here.
That is correct.
Yeah, that's all metal. It's a fiberglass cabinet that is there. And then we have the metal, the pole is metal that's, goes up there and the antenna is a fiberglass antenna. We also could, instead of the metal, we could place a wooden utility pole within that cabinet. The base of the cabinet just surrounds the pole and we place the pole inside there.
Okay, and if I could just add on to that, there's a, there's a maximum height that we're allowed to use for small cell technology. If there was co-location, would the collar at the top increase, typically increase in height? Or is the collar, once it goes on, gonna be the same height all the time? Or if there is co-location, would that collar get increased incrementally?
No, so the collar is, the wood pole collar I mentioned is just to cover, there's a bracket between the top of the pole, 12 inch bracket. So it's just to cover that to aesthetically make it look a lot better.
And would that increase in height as there's co-location?
No, it, what, the final height is what we would, is the final height of the pole.
All right, so that's good to know also then. So co-location, which I think you're hearing is something that is within the town's business model. It could be within your business model also as, as builders of this, these facilities on there then too. And you have to recoup your costs and I completely understand that. I'm more concerned in the long-term look and effects of it than too. Haas is a contractor, is that your fiber installer right now? I've seen a lot of fiber going in recently in areas.
It might be Hogland is the contractor.
Okay, Hogland, they might, they might have actually contracted out to Haas because there's a lot of fiber being installed right now then too in advance of that. I think what, you know, Councilmember Flight is saying, there's, there's other locations here. I would completely enjoy or respectfully request your company to keep looking at those locations. The places that I've driven around and understand that you're seeing right now Northwest and Springs are appropriate. It's something that I, I support. I just want to make sure that the members of the public understand that this is a long-term look to increasing wireless conditions out here. Something that Madam Supervisor has been working on, modernizing this, this is another step towards it. When we changed the code, we did say, once we build it, they'll come. And that's a field of dreams play on there. You're here now. I look forward to continuing this conversation, so I thank you, Paul.
Yeah, thank you, and I, I mean, I've done this a lot and I think the more feedback and the more discussions we have, the better this works out for everyone, so happy to have this dialogue and continue working on aesthetics and site locations as well.
And of course, vehicle safety, in terms of any kind of accidents with your poles. I'm sure, if you just talk about the safety rating for these.
That I would have to look into, exactly the safety rating. Not, it's not something that's come up before, but it definitely will get you that information.
Ian, did you have any questions?
I don't, no.
So I, so this is done administratively, so I guess the question becomes then, is it, and maybe this is more to Tina and Eric. So is this something that you folks will be deciding or like what the preferred, you know, whether the, there's a base cabinet or a shroud? Whether the pole's metal versus wood? Or is this coming here because you wanted to hear from us as well?
I just, I think Tina can, I'll address a little bit and then Tina can. I think what we do is we look at a site and we say, you know, there's a wood pole here, right, we look at those limitations first and then look at the aesthetics, right? If there's a wood pole, we probably want to match the existing right of way. We would submit an application and then you're the expert of the town, so if we would take your feedback and then try to figure out the best solution based on that, so.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would agree. I, we're going to look at each application in a site-specific manner and try to identify the best design that fits the area. You know, we did want to have the board review the schematics and, you know, make sure that they're going in a direction that you all feel is consistent with what you heard during the master planning process. The planning department has a preference for the stealth approach, where you know that, I really do feel like that minimizes the, you know, kind of bulkiness of the equipment and such, but where there's wood poles in the right of way, you know, that may not work in every case. So our objective in every case is going to be to consider context and find the best match. And that's what we're going to do, but we, you know, if there's designs today you saw you didn't like or you liked, we definitely want to know that and because it is an administrative process, there won't be public input as we go, which is different from many of our other permits as.
The visual impact, I'm watching the technician climb up on this one right now, giving me a heart attack.
Terrifying.
But when you're able to extend service with such an unintrusive system, I think it's welcome to putting in more of these huge towers.
Well, and that's just it, right? Our code actually speaks to, it says, tier one are the preferred facility type, right? This is what we asked the industry to consider in this town and now, you know, it's starting to happen and this is, this is very much the first big infrastructure investment we're seeing from the private sector as a result of all those efforts that took years to put in place. So it's great that it's happening and that's another reason we wanted everybody to be aware, like it is, it's happening, they're coming, like it's the field of dreams. And, you know, kind of get this collaboration early on for the start of the program. I think it really has a good opportunity to shape how we continue to build out the infrastructure.
And it's not saying there's still not going to be a need for newer tier three on there, because there needs to be macro sites for these, but that's longer down the road and that's not, that's not what's being presented here.
And that's not administrative.
That's correct.
Right, those are, right, so the tier three new towers do require planning board and a public review process. The wireless master plan does contemplate a mix of tier one, tier two and tier three, right? Because you would need too many tier ones to really address the whole situation. But this, this solution right now is just tier one focus. I would let Paul speak if there's towers contemplated, but I have, I have no knowledge of those associated with this.
Can I ask a question of Paul if you don't mind then too? I know a lot of locations you see these, let's say, I've been going to a lot of colleges recently and a lot of them are downtown colleges because of large buildings, either because that interrupts the service signal or again, the bandwidth, as Council Member Rogers was stating on there then too. Knowing that we're looking into some potentially new lighting poles in some areas of Amagansett, have you looked into are downtown areas covered enough? Or is this a place that you might be interested in the future?
I'd have to look exactly in that area. I'm sure if there is a coverage need there, they're going to try to place a pole there. And if it's the need to place on some of the new pole designs you have, we could certainly look at that. I mean, we place them throughout various cities on the Northeast. Each city has different streetlight designs and we're able to place them on various designs as well.
Thank you.
One last question from me, which is, one of the drivers behind this is like people's ability to contact emergency services and so, you know, if these towers are going to be primarily T-Mobile customers initially before the other carriers come, will operate, will users of other networks be able to access emergency services through the 911 system even though they're not on T-Mobile? So couldn't an AT&amp;T person use 911 on their phone via this?
50/50 on that, I want to get you that answer because it's a good question, I believe so, but I want to get the 100% for you for that answer, yeah.
One thing in design for myself, if you're going to be setting new poles across from where the current run is for electricity, I would personally prefer undergrounding or torpedoing any new power lines, so there's not a new power line that will go across the street. I don't know if that's what was being planned in your construction processes, but I think that would be again, more resilient to what we're looking for here also.
Sure, I could take that back to our design team. We also have to work with PSMG on the power, so we'll bring that to them as well.
And speaking of design, I agree with Councilman Lees, I prefer the ground concealment base as opposed to the shroud that's like halfway up the pole. So you're proposing making application for 189 poles, so is that, I don't know how the application process works. Is that 189 applications? Do you do it by community, by hamlet? How does, you know, how do you, because some you're doing, I mean, it's great, you've looked, the plan is to have some, you know, up and operating by the end of this year.
Yeah, we would batch them. We're not going to submit 189 right away. I think we have a couple attachment sites we're looking to build first and then it would, we'd probably batch them based on the hub that they're going to and so, and then when we want to construct them and when they want them on air.
With the ground concealment option, is there any risk to the operations from flooding or anything like that or no?
No, it's going to be on a base, a three to four inch base and I don't think we'll have too much flooding. And if it's a high area flooding, I don't think we'd choose that option then.
Yeah. I don't know if Eddie, if there was anything you want, you, glad you came today, thank you. Eric or Susan, were there, can we take the PowerPoint down, please? Was there any comments that you wanted to add to today's discussion?
I can just say that I appreciate all the work and time that Crown has put into looking at the master plan and the history of communication development in the town. They've put a lot of consideration into the public participation model that you used and they have tried, I think, to the best of their ability to address all the comments and concerns that were raised during the public participation process and the questions that came from staff and Cityscape.
Thank you, Susan. Eric, did you, was there anything you wanted to add? I know you were integral in working on the code changes and the wireless master plan back in, I know the first presentation took place during COVID when we were all remote, made the proposal to do, to hire Cityscape and go through and update to our code.
Yep, yeah, no, I mean, I'll just say, and I think this was mentioned already, that you know, this is what we wanted when we came up with the wireless master plan and redid the code. This is sort of the first realization of that, along with being the first, you know, large-scale deployment of small cell. I think the feedback that the town board has given and that the public may give after this presentation about the best design is going to be important as guidance for the planning department, but as Tina said, we're going to look at the specific area where things are proposed and, you know, direct the applicant to the best design that's most appropriate for that area, but you know, as included in our presentation, there is a little bit of leeway, there are different designs that can be done. And for the most part, all of those designs are, you know, pretty innocuous, so. You know, we're happy to get this application. We'll process it with the help of Cityscape, we'll check it for completeness, review design and go through the new permit process.
Great, thank you, Eric.
It's good to see you, Eric.
Thank you, nice to see you.
It's almost like you never left. So there are no other comments? Paul, we appreciate you bringing your team out here to present this and I think this is going to go a long way to improving connectivity for our community.
I would just say that I agree with the base design generally, but also really defer to the planning department in terms of site-specific elements and I think as there's rolled out, we'll hear from the community what people like best, so I think. But I agree with Kathy and Dave and everybody else that the base design looks nicer than the one mounted up. And then I just also want to say thank you, because I'm generally a big supporter, I think as everybody is, of better cell coverage. It's one of the most frequent complaints I hear from people in the community. Although, second to that is a tower next to their own, their own house. This might be a happy medium where we're able to address coverage issues, you know, a little bit more stealthily.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm great with the base design, just as long as I know the planning department will be taking into consideration flood zones.
Yeah, and I think that's part of the applications too, to identify those, so, you know, we will happily work with the planning department on design, floods and everything. Part of there, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you Tina for bringing this to us, appreciate it. Okay, so we're up to our last topic for today, litter action committee recommendations. So we invite Tina Plissette and Chris Gannich to come up to the podium to present. Welcome, ladies.
Welcome, litter action committee. And the full committee, I believe, is in the audience with us today. And really looking forward to this presentation. I just want to talk about, we're talking about, you know, making sure we don't see holes and inobtrusive structures as possible, but when you drive along the roads and our parking lots and through town and you see litter everywhere, it has that very same effect of feeling like like there can be so much more to be done, both here and also with the public, understanding the blight that is litter is, and I know you're going to talk about that, so I thank you for all your time and the full committee that they, that you devote to this issue.
Well, thank you very much and thank the entire board for allowing us a little time to present our recommendations today. Second slide, the goal of the committee simply put is to end litter in our beautiful town. Slide three will refer to the members that the litter action committee has been in action for about three years now. And the following slide tells us who the committee members are. Well, at least one member from every hamlet CAC is represented on the litter committee in order to magnify our message as well as gain input from the general community. And as I said, all the members of the committee are here today. Slide five. We have been busy over these past three few years. We have organized and participated in dozens of community litter pickups, designed and hosted multiple events during our No Fling Spring and East Hampton cleanup initiatives. Promoted as best we could, the East Hampton Highway Department's Adopt a Road program adopted two roads ourselves, which we attempt to keep clean of litter. We've created signage, we've spoken to town and New York State Department of Transportation officials. We've collaborated with other groups, businesses and individuals and a special thank you to Matt Gosick, who's right there and in the audience today. Slide six. And what we have come to realize over time is that in order to move forward, we need your help. We need the energy and resources of the town. So in our advisory capacity, the committee has formulated our recommendations, which were sent to the town board on February 19th of this year and which we would like to highlight today. So these four issues are already codified and referenced below. Enhanced education and enforcement, it is what is needed. Next slide. Parking lots. Present in the town code says that it is a responsibility of commercial businesses and landowners to keep the parking lots clean of litter. Next slide. Trash receptacles, it is illegal to place household trash in trash receptacles. A trash receptacle is required to be either inside or outside of every exit of a takeout establishment. All vehicles must have their loads covered and secured and I happen to be behind that truck on the right, which was filled with tires on Springs Fireplace Road, where those tires ended up in the middle of the road. There are many, many vehicles, examples of those vehicles to the left, where trucks are filled with either packing materials or trash of some sort, even bags of trash, bags of mulch, empty mulch bags that fly out, cardboard flies out.
So if we could just stop there for a second, I just want to emphasize that this is our newest code that was recommended by the litter action committee and code enforcement to have this on the books. And I know prior incarnations and even the work you do now on the Springs CAC and the East Hampton Seg Harbor CAC, volunteers are always out there on Springs Fireplace Road. And it's, you could see on trash days, you know, Mondays, Sundays sometimes, where you really see a lot of stuff flying off the side of the road. There's the, there's the safety issue obviously, as well as just the amount of volunteer time and town resources that it takes to clean up that corridor. So this, although it's a new code, I think an education program on making sure that folks understand that, you know, no matter how, what type of stuff you're carrying, the potential for stuff flying up and out is just drive up down Springs Fireplace Road and see the household garbage and sometimes the bags themselves just flying out and smashing on the road, so that's why this code was created and I really implore folks to participate involuntarily in securing, covering whatever in the back of their truck.
Well, that's a perfect segue to our recommendations. Oh, this is the last, sorry.
Yeah, this is another, another frequent issue.
Which is the uncovered construction dumpsters and winds like we've had.
Yeah.
You know, you know what happens.
And they are meant to be covered as well, that's in the code.
Chris showed you and Kate amplified the problems. They're evident and we all see them. We're fortunate as a town to already have on the books the code to actually correct these situations. And what we're going to talk about next is the fact that we need education and we need enforcement. We've identified the problems and as Chris said in the beginning, there's nothing more that we can do except to appeal to you to now take the ball and run with it. Our recommendation, which we discussed, new cover and secure your load signs at town transfer stations in English and Spanish. Underneath, you can see it's the law.
And Chris, you're going to talk about the.
This sign, the litter committee designed this sign. This potentially would be a temporary sign, be quite large and visible on the entrance to the transfer stations. You may look at the sign that's there now to the right, maybe you'll see it, maybe you won't. What that says is all loads must be secured, it doesn't reference the cover and secure and it barely can be seen. And you had a large sign attached to a fence that you guys volunteered and had up on the adjacent property, but this placement of a similar size sign would be really getting the message across to the users.
Right.
Rather than just kind of browsing by next door.
We also recommend that code enforcement randomly be present at the. at the transfer stations in order to enforce this message in the way they see fit.
There is a sign similar to this at the Montauk Transfer Station. It's on the inside of the transfer station all the way on the end, but it's been there for decades now. And people just really don't see it anymore. So newer ones in different locations would be a type of outreach. But there has been efforts in the past. But a renewed aspect of that would probably be helpful.
Yes, thank you.
Just quick out of interest, do we happen to know, have any tickets been issued for not covering loads in vehicles?
I don't have any data on that. I'll get it for you.
Thank you.
Our next recommendation is temporary educational signage at recent cleanup sites. So when we have these different cleanups going on, people come by, they drive down the road, they give us the high sign. But we really need to reinforce the message that it's up to the townspeople and the residents to not litter. And we pick up on roads that people travel every day. And if they saw us picking up and other groups picking up litter and they saw the sign for the next week, it might reinforce the message. Do not litter and do not toss. Next slide, please. Our recommendation is for more and better-designed trash receptacles and new pilot project sites. Because if you walk up and down or drive Springs Fireplace Road, you see we have a lovely sidewalk and we have trash all over. I mean, it goes, and then it goes on to the homeowner's property. And who's responsible for picking it up? So we do need to investigate the better trash receptacles that you cannot put household trash in. And we've talked about decals. Anything that the town can come up with to reinforce the message.
Can I go back to this one here? So with that trash receptacle there, you go back a slide.
Can you back?
That's a trash receptacle with a rain bonnet on it compared to a swing flap on there? Is that the type of trash receptacle? Because that's brand new that we're looking for recommending.
We're just recommending a trash receptacle that you can't stuff a trash bag, a full household trash bag into, which is what we can do. You can now, you can just lift up the top of those things and stuff in as much as stuff as you want.
The ones, this one's just replaced. So that's a side swing door compared to a top lift one. It's a little easier for our town staff to maintain. And I think we just invested nearly $70,000 in these ones. The places specifically in downtown areas, Montauk and Main Street. These rain bonnets that we went on there to try to keep the rain out of there. They don't allow easy access to them. Interestingly, some of them have actually even been broken in some areas of Montauk so that people could put household trash into them. They've also discouraged animals from getting into them because some areas that we've seen in the past, animals get in and spread their garbage around. Mets very aware of that out of Montauk. And lastly, some of the swing door ones that we had in the past during COVID, we removed the swing doors on them because people didn't want to touch it. And they were leaving their stuff on the side, and we're getting rid of those too. Just to let you know. So as I guess the recommendation, if you see these ones work, please let us know because they'll be the ones that we're moving forward.
It seems to me that there are certain areas that are hotspots for people putting their household trash into. And you may want to ask your employees where they are.
Maidstone.
Yeah, Maidstone in particular. Gerard Drive, end of Springs Fireplace Road. There are a number of them we see, but your employees will see them and be able to comment. You may even want to put signage, you hate to say more signage, that says no household garbage on a few of them, just to pilot that idea. And we know as well as you that some people will then take these trash receptacles, pay no attention, and put their trash to the side. We get all that, but at least we can try, you know.
We are making the recommendation to bring back the trash receptacle at Sammy's Beach. We see these poop bags. The receptacles were taken away. And now people have been sending us pictures of the bags just lying there. And we've also been recently getting pictures from other areas in town where you just have the poop bags sitting around. So this is something that needs to be addressed.
And I can also just add to that. We certainly congratulate or are in support of the carry-in, carry-out, no question. But in areas like Sammy's Beach, where there are hundreds of dog walkers a week, we just don't think that that's a good place to remove a trash receptacle. No, we had eliminated that, right? Because of the distance, because of the time it takes to get a crew up there.
There are multiple factors that that was one of them also. I think in this, that one, I respectfully disagree with the recommendation. I don't think enough time has passed by to find out the efficacy of that effort, the carry-in, carry-out program. Last week, at last week's town board meeting, I mentioned I went on a walk in the walking dunes. The top of the walking dunes, the same thing. It's lazy. It is illegal. And it is unsanitary to have dog excrement bags left there for someone else to pick up and for Mother Nation to carry over in which ways then too. These are all habitual things that we're trying to change here from littering to carry-in, carry-out policy. So I would request a little bit more patience and see how the efficacy of that location goes.
Before we move on also, I just want to say, you know, we're talking about carry-in, carry-out because we know what it means. But for folks out there, carry-in, carry-out programs are where you, whatever you bring to the beach or the park, you take home with you as well. And you don't look for the idea of leaving your own trash behind. Kind of like when you're having a backyard party, you're not leaving it out there. And it's a program, it's an educational program. And it's also a way for us to help ourselves in that. And Sammy's Beach is one of the places where we've started the carry-out, carry-in, carry-out program for folks who don't know what it is. But there's the recommendation from the committee maybe, you know, and monitoring it to see if a receptacle should be back up there as well. And I just want to also, I talked about it last week. And I know it's, you know, it can be a funny subject. But I just don't understand bagging the poop and leaving it on the beach. I see it everywhere and all the time. It is an awful practice to expect that someone else is going to take care of your garbage. It's great that you're doing it, but that's only step one. The step two is to bring it away with you. And as I said, I carry a lot of things in my car because I have dogs. You know, it's dog hospital, dog groomery, water, everything else. But also a small garbage can with a lid that I can put the poop bags in is essential as well. Please pick up after your dogs and then bag it and take it. I just want to throw that out there right now.
Okay, you're actually jumping, this jumps ahead to something else, and then we'll get back to the slide. It's the educational component that people think that by putting, using these recyclable bags, that's the end of the problem. They really don't understand that those bags don't dissolve for a very long time. And we, everything else that you highlighted, expecting someone else to pick it up. So this is part of what we're asking for is an educational.
I understand the education program, but it's hard for me to understand that people have a hard time understanding that once you bag the poop, you have to remove it from the beach. But I understand what you're saying.
So we are asking you to engage with the state DOT for ongoing and approved roadside litter removal. We're all familiar with State Route 27. It's the major artery that runs through town. And if you go down the Peak Stretch, it's disgusting. There's no other word for it.
Agreed. I find it one of the most infuriating things, how bad that is. It's just, yeah.
Well, you know, here's Route 27 and Route 114, the gateways to the beautiful town of East Hampton. And look what you see.
Yeah.
The most tourist-ed part of the town is Montauk. And what do you see? And I think Matt can talk to 27, the constant pickup he does there. Tons of trash come out of there. And frankly, we've had discussions with the state DOT. They've been very patient and giving a lot of their time in discussing. But we really need the town-to-town, government-to-government to say this job is just not being done enough.
And this is the type of trash, because after these experiences, you're experts. This is what we're seeing is just stuff that people throw out of cars.
For the vast majority, there's also some that is the same old thing. It's cover your load and don't toss. It's constant mess.
I think that's one of my, kind of, I mean, I'll jump ahead a little bit here. But my concerns about the education piece is, I mean, Kate, you've called it out with the dog bags. It's a transient population that's coming in and out. And we can put money into local messaging, et cetera. And it's, is it going to be effective?
Well, let's see.
Well, that's what this is.
Let's keep going. We're almost there. We're almost at the end.
This is what we're leading up to.
Exactly.
Next slide. That we want communication and education of contractors, landscapers, and homeowners. Does everyone know that it's the landscaper's responsibility for maintaining the clean work site? We need to put this language into the building permits and the contract licenses. But here's a caveat. We need to educate the homeowners that they are ultimately responsible and can be fined. Again, we have the code. We need the enforcement. We need the communication and the education.
So we're going to be doing a quarterly newsletter, our first one. And we're hoping to get it out before Fourth of July. We can certainly include this piece in the newsletter. We can talk about keeping East Hampton clean.
The rental registry. We've looked at the different pieces of the registry. And there is mention about collecting the trash and taking care of this. But it needs really, the trash hauling requirement needs to be ironclad. And the homeowner needs to be made fully responsible. So it can't be just once a month. And then when the family leaves their rental for, you know, after the weekend, they just go to one of the trash receptacles and deposit the trash. It really needs to be ironclad. How the homeowner is responsible for making sure that trash is collected on a timely basis so that we know that this is taken care of.
So I am with the rental registry also, looking at some of the, some of the ways that the rental registry is used, not just by single homeowners, but the amount of trash that is generated. And those are very high rents that folks are getting for very short-term rentals. And, you know, I would even be in favor of looking at a cost because we're paying for it, to look at adding a cost as well to making sure that we're covering our costs for the trash that's generated through the short-term rentals.
Thank you. Right. Next. This is it. Oh, I'm sorry. We are recommending an anti-litter campaign. And this is what all of this was leading up to. We need education. We need a change in behavior. We need code enforcement. But the only way to really bring all of this together is with an anti-litter campaign. It needs to be town-wide in English and Spanish, professionally designed, not by us. It needs to target the sources. It makes it fun, and it gets everyone involved. I'd like to point to one campaign that we keep looking back at. It's called Don't Mess With Texas. It's getting lots of publicity. It's been hugely successful. And the line "Don't Mess With Texas" reaches out to its residents. We need the same.
Next slide. New York City just initiated its anti-litter campaign. And what better time than to initiate East Hampton's litter campaign than now? We are attached at the hip to New York City. Their tagline, "Don't Do New York Dirty." Typical New York type of tagline, "Trash Your Trash." They have a fabulous 30-second PSA or one of their many, many ones, which we can send to you. Next slide, please. This is the East Hampton's Litter Action Committee's tagline, "Don't Trash East Hampton." Litter transcends all politics. It doesn't matter if you are left, right, center, up, down, sideways. Politically, everyone agrees this is not how our beautiful town should look. So we look forward for your help. We will look forward to continue our mission to keep East Hampton beautiful together. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm just going to comment on this. I apologize if I'm blunt, but this makes me really angry, very truthfully. And I just have a major concern that the education piece, I understand where you're coming at with it. But people know this already. We know not to leave litter on the ground. And I don't think additional education is necessarily what we need. I think that, you know, it runs a risk of us saying we're doing something when actually we're not. I think you've hit on one point, which I do agree with, which is I think we absolutely need stronger enforcement on this. I would additionally say, I had the honor of spending a morning with Mickey Gausse out in Montauk a while back, picking up litter in the morning. And that's operated through a grant that we kind of give to the Chamber of Commerce to help him kind of facilitate that. And that's really what we need to be doing as a town. We need to be paying people to get out there to pick up this garbage because that is the only way we're truthfully going to address this problem. I do agree that, yes, the public needs to take on more of a role in doing this. And we, you know, it's right and proper to remind people that they need to secure their loads and pick this stuff up. But if we want this litter to go away, we have to tax, you know, the residents here accordingly and the businesses here accordingly and pay for it to be picked up because that is the only truthful way it's going to happen.
I think that's a little bit of a double-edged sword also, is that the more you go out there and you pick it up, the more people say someone else is going to do it. I think at some point, you have to look yourself in the mirror and say, I'm going to do it myself or I'm not going to, not going to do it then too. So I understand the bluntness of it. But, you know, the point is, this starts from within. It starts how you're parented, and you shouldn't be doing this. And I don't disagree with you how bad it is. I also don't want to say it's worse in a lot of other areas than East Hampton. But East Hampton is definitely much more beautiful than other locations. You want to go directly to the code. Chapter 167 is for litter and dump control, specifically in public places. And let's go to the receptacles on there. Part about the receptacles and private property is that presumptive evidence on there. We actually did actually get a ticket to an individual that was dumping their household garbage, which included bank statements with their names on it.
Just recently.
They got a ticket on there because I went down there and I called them. I saw it down there for weeks in a row, then Springs Fireplace Road, first thing in the morning. And always on a Monday, not on a Thursday, because a lot of people come from the weekends and leave. That presumptive evidence is going to land them in court on July 4th or something to that effect. Also around, there was rat poison. There was paint thinner there and just pure household trash on there. Presumptive evidence will also come, very similar than to what they did up in Brookhaven in the Pine Barrens with cameras, then too. I think what you're trying to say is one way we do this right now is you hard hammer it with more cameras and more enforcement actions also then too. That will get spread around. And those are all things and tools in the belt, in the tool belt that the town of East Hampton has to potentially use. And I don't mind doing it. And I'll let you know it's already being done then too. You also look at the fine and fee schedule. The fine and fee schedule for the penalties on here are pretty light. If the board wanted to look at it, increasing the fee schedule and fine schedule on there, the first offense might be, there's actually civil penalties, small penalties, not less than $300, and might even go down to $150 on there. Those are too light to me. So I wouldn't mind looking at that. Part of one of the recommendations I know is by putting, there used to be, I know they did in the village a long times ago and the town, a simple reminder, I'm not necessarily looking for more signs, but if it's a sticker on top of municipal waste cans, they say no household litter, I think that is appropriate. And maybe the fine schedule on top of that. I think that's something I can easily support. Most of all this, I can, I can support. What is very difficult is just to see it constantly happen because it's a definition of insanity on there. But something too, what your committee is doing right now is trying to get individual touches to more people, one at a time, more meetings, more efforts. And hopefully with that holistically and that we can change things to people that won't do this anymore. I am challenged to say that we're going to be able to make everything perfectly clean or by doing this, people are going to say, it doesn't matter. Someone else is going to, someone else's problem on there. I want to be very careful with that line on there. But it is very disheartening, I think is the word I'll use then too, to constantly see it happening. And sometimes it's by mistake. But when it's just purely disregard on there, I think that's, those are the things we have to come down heavier on. the, those are the things we have to come down heavier on, personally, in my humble opinion.
So for me, and we talked about this, I don't ever think there's just one solution. I think it's a multi-pronged approach. I think there's a reason why people start no-smoking campaigns and anti-litter campaigns. A plethora of places have them. They may not capture everyone, but everyone that you can get is better than where you started. So I think with the enforcement targeted campaign about litter and all the other recommendations that you have here are, are going to make an impact, and I'm supportive of them. I really don't think you can just do one thing. I don't think that's ever going to work. I think letting the community and our visitors know that picking up litter is a top priority for East Hampton, along that we talk about everything else. Because when we say "beautiful," it's beautiful here, well, it doesn't happen by itself, and we need everyone to respect, respect our outside. Besides the fact that, again, besides the visual blight that we're talking about, there's an environmental consequence for just letting your plastics, and I don't know how many cigarette butts I've picked up in the sand with, you know, my grabber, I've gotten really good at it, small targets. The phenomenal amount, I don't know how night drinking in places equals leaving all your stuff there, every bottle. I mean, we've picked up so many bottles. And I just think it's important to enforce, it's important to look for appropriate cost factors, reducing the economic impacts to us that come from litter, but also getting the word out there that, we're serious about this litter, and we want, we want to put it in people's, upfront in people's mind as much as we can. So that's my statement on this. And you're never going to, I mean, I remember, there's been litter, national litter campaign since I'm a small child, but it did make a difference in my family. So where things got tossed out the car window, because back then it was mostly stuffed in the car for thousands of miles on car trips with, you know, smoking parent, and those butts went right out the window. But that campaign did change my family's and a lot of folks that I talk about attitude where suddenly there was a receptacle in the car. So I know it can help. I don't know if it can cure, but we shouldn't throw out the good in search of the perfect ever. And I just want to thank you all for all that you do. It's with so many issues going on and not everywhere in the world, and locally here as well, to really do all that you can, and you do do all that you can to, number one, these are the folks that are picking it up for you. Embarrassingly enough, that folks have to go out and volunteer and take up their time and put gloves on and get bags and wear vests so they don't get run over by cars to pick up your garbage. I just want to say that I've never really seen, you know, people dedicated to a cause like this as you are, and for the amount of time you've been doing it for ever. So thank you.
Yeah, like the other board members, I certain, oh, I'm sorry, was somebody going to? Like the other board members, I certainly recognize this as a major issue and a very important one to keep our town as beautiful as it ought to be. And I thank this group for, I know many of you, and I see you in other contexts, how passionate you are and thoughtful that you are about the issue. I support most of the recommendations. I do think education is a worthwhile endeavor, for sure. But I do think Tom, and maybe Dave and others have pointed out, that people know this. I mean, I think everybody should know that we're not supposed to throw our garbage around. And so I support the educational efforts, but I don't want to, I don't want to be overly optimistic that itself is going to solve. So I think that we have to work on enforcement. I think Tom's idea about, you know, more local pickups are good. I agree with Dave that we don't want to make people feel that they don't have to take responsibility, because we will just take care of it for them. So I think there's a delicate balance in there, and it's a, it's a big problem that we'll need to attack from a number of different angles. I'm certainly in favor of the signs at the recycling center. I'm a little more skeptical of the signs in the roadways, just because there's a lot of good, important causes out there, and as a town, we generally are not in favor of signs. So I think that can be a slippery slope, and again, I worry about whether it would make a difference, although I do understand the idea behind it, which is to say, "We just cleaned this. Please help keep it clean." So I'm a little skeptical there, but I totally understand. The Better Trash Receptacles, 100%, I support, and I know that Dave and Steve O'Brien and the Buildings and Grounds Department have done a lot of work on that. I am baffled, I own a dog, you know, I have to pick up waste. I am baffled by the idea that somebody would pick it up and then leave it there. And that's one, and this relates to the Sammy's Beach receptacle, where I don't want to just pretend that people can't do a better job. And so I do think, if I go to the beach or go into the woods or wherever, whatever I bring in, I bring out, and I think that that is a reasonable expectation. I know that there's short-term problems there, but I hope everybody understands, the public and the committee, that there's also limited staff hours. And so if it were as simple as us just saying, "Oh, we'll have staff make everything better," we would probably do that, but it's not a reality, and there's a lot of other work on everybody's plate, and going to Sammy's Beach to empty these receptacles is difficult. And in some ways, I fear that those receptacles actually encourage people to put their household trash around it. So I wish I had a better answer there, but I do, I am willing to embrace the sort of pack-in, pack-out mentality, because underlying that is the idea that we just have to take care of our own trash, and I think that is the underlying idea. So just want to thank you again. And if we can get any movement out of the state, great. I don't know what previous conversations have been between the town and the state. My experience with that kind of communication is great, but it's hard to get results. They have their own workload, and when East Hampton calls and says, "Keep our town beautiful," it might be difficult to get, you know, street patrols. But I thank you for coming, supportive of the efforts, for sure. Hope we find a solution and want to continue the conversation.
Bob, did you want to come up to the podium? We'll be able to hear you.
Oh, and one other, one other detail, actually. The rental registry, and if you rent in your house, I do think it's very reasonable to have some mechanism to make sure that people who are doing that are ensuring the trash is taken care of, because, you know, it's not.
I thought that was written into the rental registry.
Yeah, I have it, but it's, let's have Bob talk, and then we can go back.
Okay. Hi, Bob Brody. I know some of you, some of you I don't know. I think that the education is important, and the carrot and stick, the stick, I think, has not been used enough at all. And I think part of the education on anything we put, like if we put stickers on trash receptacles, or anything we put, you should tell what the penalty is.
Great.
I mean, you know, that can change people's attitude, especially if one gets caught and tells his friends. But other than that, I mean, I don't know. You heard the recommendations we had. I think education is important. Once again, you probably weren't living here then, but there was a commercial, probably in the '60s, about an American Indian crying, and that was very powerful. So education can work. I don't know how much, but I think it can educate people to the fact that they're going to get penalized, but then you have to enforce it.
If we are really enforcing it.
Yeah, I know. I understand.
That goes back to the ticket question. I think, you know, how many tickets have we actually issued in the last five years for litter things? I mean, we see the signs on the highway saying now it went from $250 to $1,000 for littering. I don't think there's been one ticket.
But the reality is, if you're driving down the nap rig stretch and you want to throw out your Coca-Cola bottle, and you see an officer, you're not going to throw it out when the officer is, you know, in range. You're going to wait until you pass him and you're clear, and then it goes out the window. So it's, you know, David's point, we discussed at the Public Safety Meeting a week or so ago, where we did go through garbage and found bank statements, and we were able to write tickets. But it's really difficult for PD or code enforcement to see someone throwing out litter and that's, or dropping up.
I agree.
Back to, back to, you know, David's point, do we need more cameras? And then you have the cameras pick up license plates, and then, you know, Jake, you have to tell me if then, if there's a nexus between the license plate and the visual on the camera. So enforcement is very challenging.
I agree, and that's why I go back to.
Like you slow down when you see a car. If you're going 70 on a road that's 55 and you see a police officer up ahead, what do you do? You take your foot off the gas, you take your foot off, you put your foot on the brake. So that's the challenge.
To the point that education, yes, I do, I recall the advert, and I do, I strongly believe in education generally, but I think, as we've kind of called out, this is something people know. And Kathy, to your point, I agree, enforcement is incredibly challenging. So we know that there's a solution that actually works this. It's paying people to pick litter up.
The state, the state literally does that.
Four times a year.
Yeah, I know. And, but I don't even know if the people really actually do it. They, the people hire, they pay for it. I don't know if it's actually done. We've talked to the state, but whatever. Okay, thank you for your time.
But just to add to this conversation, we have talked back and forth, too, about how difficult it is. You have to see the person.
Yeah, that was my point.
Littering in order to give the ticket. So that's why we always come back to the recycling stations, because when the trucks come in, if their loads aren't covered and they get a ticket, this spreads the word that we're serious about the enforcement. That's one area that we can do something and spread the word about the enforcement. So we ask you to consider that. It could be random officers at the check-in spot, and if it's done randomly and some of the contractors get fines, then the word will spread, and that'll at least alleviate the problem on the main roads. We also have talked about other ways to attack, you know, the tossing, and that's going to be the educational component. But we also need to get to the contractors and the landscapers, because there's a lot of lawn garbage left in the woods where the different projects are ongoing. So maybe some random site searches where people, where the officers know that there is a construction site, look around and see if there's garbage nearby. I think it's going to take some smart thinking about how to tackle this. Thank you.
No, I thank you. And I think your comment about having people at the recycling centers is good and valid. We have raised that before, because we've had complaints about people not putting recycling to the right containers and not following the guidance there. The challenge there is, is that they are limited in their resources, too. So it's, you know, us giving that direction to code enforcement that, hey, this is now the priority more than, than what. And so, you know, it requires investment, one or another, on the town's behalf to make, to fix this problem. And I think that's one of the commitments we need to discuss the town board, is that is this worth it to us as a town? I think having that pressure from you is there. I think another piece to this that, you know, is beyond our scope, but as a town, we could certainly support, is, you know, writing to our colleagues in federal government as well, because, you know, some of this trash is better than some other, you know, it's not all trash is quite the same. Someone throwing out plastic wrappers, you know, the single-use plastic disposal, those bags, they take such an age to degrade, and when they do, their microplastics in our water system are incredibly damaging versus brown paper bags, far less damaging. So, you know, is their scope at a federal level to kind of, you know, really push to have more tax on, on those elements that really do pollute and destroy our wonderful landscape?
Yeah. So I was just going to go through, so I agree with having signs at the transfer stations about the covering and securing your load. We can also have, we have a Public Safety Meeting tomorrow. We can talk about having code enforcement periodically, randomly, starting with an education campaign for folks going that their loads have to be covered and secured. About the temporary educational signage, I'm like better putting things in the positive as opposed to, you know, you know, "Please do not litter," more about, you know, "This roadway was cleaned by your neighbors," or "It was, you know, the Litter Action Committee" something, and it's not up for just a couple of days and that rotates. I'm in agreement with the garbage, you know, doing new trash receptacles. I know David's been working on that, and it's shocking how expensive a single receptacle is. The, I'm willing to give time on Sammy's Beach. I know, like, in the summer, it's like a 45 minutes there and back, correct, to pick up. You know, it's just, it's, it's so remote that that's, you know, an issue, so we should be monitoring that. Happy to engage with the state DOT. I know we have a crew that goes out. I see the folks, you know, the town's roadside litter assistants out and about. I passed it, I think it was Monday, and they were on Springs Fire Place Road. Again, I think to Tina's point, it requires smart thinking. I think there's a lot of touch points. We can, you know, once we, you know, refine our message, it can be included with building permits, contractors' licenses, you know, there's, you know, we'll put it in the quarterly newsletter to remind folks. So I think that's something. I think, you know, I think the next step was the rental registry. I pulled up the rental registry form, because I remember doing this. I had originally been the sponsor of the rental registry back in the day, and then we added to the application process, but it's just, it says, you know, the four ways that you can do things, but it, there's no, there's no teeth to it. So I think we do need to go back and look at, to that. I also think that part of what we, having folks go and not buy a permit, but only want to go for, you know, you know, one day you're leaving on Sunday, Sunday afternoon or Monday, where I believe we're charging, I'm sorry, this is, Becky sent me a screenshot, and it's so small, I can't read it. It's $25. I think that that's, you know, we're trying to cover our costs, but at the same time, you know, $25, or take a ride up to Maidstone Beach and drop off my bag of garbage. So that's something that we need to wrap our heads around.
Ironically, we don't really charge it, though. I mean, like, when you talk to the operators there, although we have that in place, it's not, again, it's enforcement, you know, so it's.
So maybe we want to come back and talk about, you know, if you really wanted people to drop their garbage up on the way out of town, you wouldn't charge them $25, you know? So there's, you know, obviously, we need to weigh that. And, you know, again, anti-litter, I'm a, I like to have everything in the positive, but, you know, professionally, you know, done and designed, we would have to hire a firm to come in, and I don't know what the cost of that would be. I don't know if that's 10 grand or 40 grand, but there's low-hanging fruit here that we can, we can tackle immediately. And, and I think, like my colleagues, I believe we should.
The only thing I want to, additional thing I want to say is about the targeted enforcement at the recycling center. I want to be careful not to overreach. I think our laws are written pretty strictly so that code enforcement can enforce it if you have unsecured load with stuff blowing out. That said, we do live in a semi-rural community where there's a lot of pickup trucks and stuff that might be in the bed that is not a problem. So I just, if we stationed somebody there and were to the T ticketing people, I think it would have a bad effect. And so I just want to be cognizant of that. I know that we don't want to selectively enforce, but I want to make sure that if we are enforcing, that we're addressing the actual problem and not overreaching and, you know, causing more issues.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, we've done this before, where we've had code enforcement stationed periodically at the recycling center, and it's really, it starts with education. We create a flyer, or, you know, and as the trucks are coming in, it's a minute conversation. Hey, just want to make sure you're aware that this is, this is the town code, and explain why, you know? But I also think there's a point where you have to say, and we're going to start enforcing this, you know, next month. So you do your education, but for the folks that just totally ignore it. And that's the weird thing about, you know, judging whether something's right in the back of a pickup truck. Sometimes, you know, just for safety measures, you don't know what's going to happen, a bump in the road, a swerve of this or that. So if the code is simply to cover just a tarp, you know, just some kind of.
So if the code is, is simply to cover just a tarp, I, you know, just some kind of covering, I don't think it's onerous to be able to do that. But I do, code enforcement in general, with everything that we do, always starts off with an education timeframe and then alerting the public that as and from this time, you know, we're going to be issuing.
Well, look, to be clear, egregious actors, people who are causing the problem, I'm happy with writing a ticket today. I just mean if we go this step farther and start stationing code enforcement, that I want to make sure we're cognizant of where the problem actually arises.
Do you want to come up?
Hi, Jane.
Hi, I'm Jane speaking as part of this committee, not on any other board or business. So just so you know, we had been engaged with Kevin, you know, Cooper, and that's what they were going to do, right? They were going to be there to hand out the, or, you know, speak to the information. It was going to be a period with no enforcement. But I just wanted to give you, Chris and I, when the cover your load codes kicked in, we did a little, I don't know, we sat at the entrance to the East Hampton Recycling Center and hour, hour and a half, and we just made notes how many loads were coming in that were not secured and not covered. I can give you the actual numbers I don't have with me, but it was 90% pretty much of every truck that came in was not covered and not secured. So, but, you know, having code enforcement presence, and now I know we're in the teeth of the season, but I think that is really what our whole thing was before writing tickets or enforcement.
So, you know, granted, this was a very small sample, but was it mostly commercial operators or just resident, like just residential folks?
You know, we saw commercial trucks, the ones that, the landscapers that were going to the other part. And there were many, we saw many violations there, but there weren't that many. But I think the rest of it were all local residents, regular pickup trucks, you know, cans in the back, not covered, not secured. I mean, you name it, we, we saw it. It was, we weren't expecting the lack of compliance to be as profound as it, as it was. And, you know, we, we can go back again and do some more surveillance, but it was very, it was very profound to see that we're sort of starting at zero in terms of, it seems like the knowledge of the code. And I think it's really easy, aside from the sign that we presented to, you know, just takes one or two times for ordinance to be there educating. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So that wraps up our topics for today. So we can now move on to liaison reports and thank you all for all the work that you do to keep East Hampton beautiful.
Thank you. All right, I will start off with the Amagansett Citizens Advisory Committee. We met last week. We had Marty Colleton as our guest. Key conversations were around the schedules for the code enforcement this year. There was some confusion as to whether or not they're changing from what they were last year, or I have checked with our liaison, Councilmember Rogers, they're going to be the same schedules as they were for last year. You know, key things that people call in for that they say historically is the overclearing, leaf blowers, you know, just some discussion about OpenGov and how to do that. And that actually evolved into a different conversation, which is people holding unauthorized special events and how and when to report them and whether there would be any scope for the town to publish in some way a list of what special events have been authorized for people to check in on so that they can say, oh, this film shoot is allowed to be here in the morning or not. So it's just something for us to discuss as a committee as we go forward this week.
So interesting, that will be, that would be, I think, a heavy lift from a staffing perspective because of things that would have to be redacted because those permits have people's phone numbers and things like, and residential.
I mean, we have the Excel report and has one column in there that's the address and then otherwise it's the date, I think, and the time. I think if we just had those three columns.
Yeah, I mean, the other thing is that, you know, if there's an issue, all they have to do is call the non-emergency number at the police department and dispatch has that sheet. I think that's an easier way to do it is to have them call the non-emergency number that David said, and they could know right away whether something was like.
Yeah, I mean, I think the counter to that would be potentially that like it's creating work for our town employees to do that versus if the public can check themselves online before they call, then they know there's an issue or not an issue. So it just kind of avoids the phone call in the first place. Just a thought for us to think.
And just so, you know, in the newsletter, we are going to be talking about special events so that folks will know what, you know, residential, who needs a residential permit and some of the, you know, not, you know, no amplified music after nine o'clock without a special event permit, that kind of thing. So, you know, we're, we're using it kind of to educate.
Other discussions were around Cramby Hall Bridge Row. There was a question to the town, which is, did the town receive a formal engineering report pertaining to the closure of the bridge?
Say that again.
A formal engineering report. Have we, has that been shared with us, the actual engineering report as to why the bridge was closed? They're additionally looking for updates on the Sterns property, if any, if anything is happening there. And then there was a request of the personal public information officer could actually do a post advising on code pertaining to hedges on the roadside and rocks on the roadside as well. It's something that they think is an issue in the hamlet. IT, as of yesterday, all building applications are required to be submitted online. The rollout procedure is proceeding fairly smoothly. You know, I did reach out to different departments from planning. I heard, you know, there's a special secretary's, there's been a simplification in submission process and no longer require five copies of everything. Stamping received every piece of paper has kind of gone away, distributing the copies to all the board members, recycling all the copies, you know, having only enough to keep one original. And so previously there was a lot of waste, so that's been a real improvement in their operations from that as well. I just want to also update the, the board members on where we're at in terms of how many records have been completed to date in OpenGov between the different departments. We're up to 499 applications that have been completed in OpenGov at this point already. So it's, it's moving smoothly. Human Services. So we've got quite a bit going on this week. There is a painting and drawing class with Kate Goldman that was canceled last week and is now being rescheduled for Tuesday, May 20th at 2:00 PM. So you've got an hour to get yourselves down there, people. There is no Ashwell Hall class this week as the venue is not available. Wednesday is old, active older adults day. The 60-plus community, we're encouraging to visit the center and celebrate. On Wednesday, we have celebrating strength, spirit and staying power, a full day of movement, mindfulness and meaningful connection. And then on, we have 10:00 AM mindfulness club as well. 11:00 AM, we have functional fitness. At noon, we have a congregant lunch program and at 2:00 PM, we have Zumba. Just one of that message, getting older doesn't mean slowing down, just means getting stronger, wiser and even more fabulous.
I like that.
Brooks Park Committee. We have a meeting taking place with the Property Management Committee tomorrow evening. You know, we have members from the committee attending that as well. We're discussing their proposed management plan. I'd also additionally want to update that committee. I have been working with the Land Management Committee. There is on that property, a very rare beech tree. There's one of only 1,500 in the world that's now known to be there. Some of the members of that committee had reached out to inquire whether we could use the injection treatment. That's not something the town is actively pursuing at this point. However, on some of the beech trees on town property here, there is a different process that we're pursuing and I have asked the Land Management Committee to follow that on that tree as well to help preserve it as best we can. Marine Museum, I'm actually currently reviewing the management plan that Councilman Lee shared with me regarding the classic boat group because there's been a little bit of friction there between the classic boat group and the marine museum and I want to make sure that those two groups can get aligned. East End Fire Commissioners, next meeting is Tuesday, May 27th, 7:00 PM at the Amagansett Special Events, this is, it isn't on the Special Events Committee because it's a slightly different thing, but I did want to give people a heads up on this. Reminder, on May 23rd through May 25th, there is the Traveling Vietnam Memorial Wall. It's a three-fifth scale of Vietnam Memorial in Washington DC and stands six feet tall at the center and covers almost 300 feet from end to end. The memorial stands for a reminder of the great sacrifices made during the Vietnam War. It was made for the purpose of helping rekindle friendships and to allow people the opportunity to visit loved ones in their hometown who otherwise may not be able to make the trip to Washington. Public Safety, it's EMS Week. Thank you to all our town volunteers. Just having a quick look through the town dispatch numbers, last year there were approximately 3,000 to 4,000 calls covered by the various districts in the towns. Just a reminder, all our ambulance organizations out here are volunteer. For those interested in joining, contact your local fire district. If you're not sure of how to do that, please feel free to contact my office. Each day this week, there is a theme for EMS Week. Today's theme is actually around safety and I just want to remind people in that realm of Brianna's Law that was passed by Governor Cuomo. It's about boating while intoxicated and additionally the boat of safety courses. All boat operators are now, have to complete the approved boat of safety course. It is being offered by Chief Harbor Master Tim Treadmill. There'll be a class on Tuesday, June 17th at 9:30 AM to 5:30 PM at the Montauk Library, 871 Montauk Highway. Disabilities Advisory Board, we met last week. We're looking to get a representative from the East Hampton Village onto the board with the resignation of Tom Prieto, the, the former building inspector there. Also, any public members who may be interested in joining the committee, we're doing some outreach for people there. Our current focus is on town playgrounds and improving facilities for those with disabilities at our playgrounds. Jason, if you could bring up that image I sent over possibly now, I just want to update people as well. I just want to thank my colleague, Councilman Leece and the Recreation Department, John Rooney. We've been putting up beach mats at town beaches at different locations. You'll see them at Atlantic Beaches among other places. They're in a T shape. The purpose for that is not for people to put their shoes on the horizontal pieces. It's so people in wheelchairs can actually get down to the beach and enjoy. So please try to keep those T shapes as free of debris as possible for users.
Councilmember Fife, I just wanted to let you know, I do have that image up for the broadcast. We seem to be having some network connection issues. I believe it's all due to LTE's, but I want to let you know that the people at home are 100% seeing it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that, Matt. East Hampton Youth Task Force, a reminder to the public, today is game one of East Hampton High School's playoff games. It starts at 4:00 PM. I wish everybody in that game the best of luck, particularly to two of my former Montauk guys, Trevor Meham and Carter Dickinson. Go Bonak and get that done. I also want to remind people that school budget votes happen today between 2:00 and 8:00 PM. Please do your civic duty and get out there and vote on that. Arts Council Committee, June 12th, there will be a, a talk being held at the LTV Studios about Artists in Paradise, the challenges of navigating the contemporary visual arts scene in the Hamptons. We have a variety of speakers, including Tripoli Patterson, Karen Fredericks and others. And it's discussion around how the town, the community can work to help future artists. We have a phenomenal history of art in this town and it's seen by many as under threat and we want to look at what we can do to improve pieces out there. They did ask the town, it would be possible to send out an advertisement on the, not investment, but a social media post, just advertising the event if possible.
Sorry, what was the event?
It's a talk, a talk about how to support the arts in the Hamptons. Emergency Preparedness, I attended a CDC meeting this week discussing the measles outbreak in Texas. It's something that's been raised by some community members to me. The outcome of the meeting was just to remind people that the threat is largely contained to Texas. There's so far been 1,002, sorry, 1,024 confirmed cases as of May 16th, of which 13% have been hospitalized. There's a generally considered to be a low risk to US population as a whole and a significantly low risk to those who are immunized. 68% of cases have been affecting people under 19 years of age. Tick Control Committee, we met last Friday. We're currently reviewing questions that have been submitted and we have an upcoming LTV discussion that will be happening with some of the medical professionals out there. And I've got a few others here. I think that's everything for me.
Thank you, Tom.
I have three things. Due to some of the beach erosion that we've had at Big Alberts, they're trying to get the access points, get the stand down there. There might be a potential that that beach might not have guards this weekend. If that is so, we'll put it on social media, but they're working on that. But we know we have some rain incoming the next two days. At the Stevie Hans Path Long Lane, the new traffic calming measure by putting a roundabout there, the signage has been installed, the concrete work is continuing and is functioning as a roundabout. But again, their paving potentially will be completed next week, but please expect delays and detours. Lastly, I do have a resolution on today for a water quality funding award to the Nappy Camping Club. There were no changes to the recommendations from the Water Quality Technical Advisory Committee on that.
So the dollar amount didn't change?
That is correct, yes. That's all I have.
Great. Thank you, David. Kate?
Yes, and the Sustainability Committee was not able to meet yesterday. There was an emergency at a job site that had to be taken care of by one of the co-chairs. So I'm going to talk about in my liaison report, a, the East Hampton Town seasonal ban on gas-powered leaf blowers goes into effect today. I want to give a shout out to everybody about this, that in our town, in efforts to have a quieter East Hampton and reduce our greenhouse gases, from May 20th to September 20th of every year, no landscaper, homeowner, business owner or municipal employee shall operate any gas or diesel-powered leaf blower. No leaf blowers of any type may be operated on a Sunday between May 20th and September 20th of any year. This legislation was passed by the East Hampton Town Board in early 2021. And in addition to the ban on gas-powered leaf blowers between May 20th and September 20th of any year, the law bans the use of gas-powered leaf blowers during the rest of the year, before 8:00 AM or after 6:00 PM on weekdays, before 9:00 AM or after 5:00 PM on Saturdays, on Sundays or federal or New York State holidays unless operated by a homeowner or tenant, and then it may be used between the hours of 9:00 AM and 3:00 PM. Violations may result in suspension or revocation of the East Hampton Town Home Improvement Contractor's License and a fine up to $1,000 for first offense and $5,000 for multiple offenses. For further information or to lodge a complaint, please contact the East Hampton Town Ordinance Enforcement Department at 631-324-3858. And let's just make it a little bit quieter out there. That's what I have.
Great, thank you. Ian?
Just a very brief liaison report today. The Spring CAC will meet tonight at 6:00 PM at Ashwell Hall. The main topic on the agenda is the Springs Fireplace Corridor. There's a lot of interest from that group, including some of the people from the litter action committee. So anybody interested in anything Springs, especially the corridor, please come tonight, 6:00 PM at Ashwell Hall. As Tom mentioned in his report, the Property Management Committee will meet tomorrow at 4:30 PM at Town Hall and the main topic of conversation is the Bricks Park, the Brooks Park property. There is an adopted management plan. In reading through that plan, I'm not sure if it's the current vision of the town and so we want to revisit with a prospective licensee as well as that group and amend or redo that management plan, which, once we do that on the committee level, we'll bring it back to the board to see how the, the board feels.
Great, thank you, Ian. So I just wanted to let folks know, because I know there's a great deal of interest in the Stony Brook East Hampton Emergency Room, that at our next board, Town Board Work Session Tuesday, June 3rd, Stony Brook Medicine is going to be here. Dr. William Wertheim, Dr. Todd Griffin and Emily Mastler will be presenting. They'll have video, I believe, of what the new center looks like and talk about their plans for medical care here on the East End. Preparations are underway for Memorial Day weekend. It's hard to believe it's, you know, right around the corner. I just want to let folks know that for the East Hampton Town Police Department, shifts will be fully staffed around the clock over the long weekend with supplemental staffing of part-time officers during overnight hours. Foot patrols will be on duty along Main Street in Montauk and Amagansett, focused on quality of life violations and traffic safety. Stop DWI overtime shifts have been assigned to further ensure road safety and traffic control officers will be on duty each day. East Hampton Town Marine Patrol, ordinance enforcement and fire prevention will be, have fully staffed patrols on duty from Thursday through Monday. Marine Patrol will be conducting boat patrols of Three Mile Harbor, Gardener's Bay, Fourth Pond Bay and Montauk Harbor. We just want to remind folks that drivers are urged to move over and yield to emergency vehicles, including fire, ambulance and volunteer ocean rescue responders. Clearing the way promptly can help save lives and ensure first responders reach their destinations safely. While town offices will be closed on Monday, just a reminder that the recycling centers will be open. And lastly, reminder that the recycling centers will be open. And lastly, we're committed to maintaining the highest standards of safety for residents and visitors alike. And if anyone has any concerns, none, the non-emergency number for the East Hampton Town Police Department is 631-537-7575. And lastly, I hope, you know, we will see everyone at the Memorial Day Parade this Monday, May 26th. The parade takes off at 10:00 AM and we typically, the Town Board, hopefully everybody can make that. We stand outside Citarella or London Jewelers, depending, and watch it with the other electeds. And then we go down to Hook Mill and for the remarks and the missing man ceremonies. So I hope the community will join us there to celebrate and honor, you know, this Memorial Day. And that's what I have from my liaison report. And so now we can move on to resolutions.
Resolution 2025-769, this is for a extension of Resolution 2025-213. This is to extend the time period for Brenda McPherson from May 21st, '25 through June 30th, 2025.
Second.
All in favor.
I'm happy to offer Resolution 2025-770. This is a notice of public hearing to amend Chapter 91, Beaches and Park Session 4 for prohibited conduct, specifically in this section, as we discussed a long time ago. As no person shall walk through or cross over any dunes unless in a location authorized by the town trustees or town board, including but not limited to elevated walkways, stairs, and specially designed dune crossing structures, or designated footpaths. This will be held on June 5th, 2025, at 6:00 PM.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
Sure.
Publication we have on here, what, May 22nd?
May 29th.
Or yes, the date.
Okay, so I'll amend that to have a publication as in Section 5 for May 29th, 2025. As amended?
So second as amended?
All in favor.
Aye. 770 is the authorized grant application to Suffolk County Water Quality Protection and Restoration Program for a grant for $250,000 for the Westlake Boat Launch Stoneware Project.
Second. All in favor.
Aye. 772 is the set bid EH25-012 for Town Hall Plaza, waterproofing to Austin interiors in the amount of $412,400.
Second. All in favor.
Aye. 773 is the, accept the donation of services through the town and mortars for 20 Springs Fireplace Road farmland.
Second. All in favor.
Aye. 774 is the authorized CPF water quality contribution to the Conic Observatory Partnership, which is requested, seeking community preservation funds to match the EPA federal contribution. This is, this is recommended by the Water Quality Technical Advisory Committee, and this amounts for $255,000 for calendar year 2025.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
I have Resolution 775 is a notice of public hearing to amend UR MAP EH17, Urban Renewal Parcel 4 and 6 for a lot line modification. And take notice that there'll be a Town Board public hearing on July 3rd at 6:00 PM to consider this modification of the lot line. And prior to that, we will have a presentation and a work session.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Next, I have Resolution 776 is to schedule a public hearing for the grant of a scenic and conservation easement at 8 Ocean Lane in Amagansett. This hearing will take place on Thursday, June 5th at 6:00 PM. The grantor is Clifford Shapiro. It's 8 Ocean Lane, Amagansett. Reviewing agency is Zoning Board of Appeals.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 777 is to schedule a public hearing, a notice of public hearing for a grant of a scenic easement, scenic and conservation easement for 3 North Surfside Avenue, Montauk. This public hearing will also take place on Thursday, June 5th at 6:00 PM at Town Hall. The grantor is the Notaro Living Trust, and the reviewing agency is Zoning Board of Appeals.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 778 is to release security for Urban Renewal Parcel 24 in Amagansett 1. And this is to read, for security posted, to release security posted for roadwork. The original applicant is Barbara Olson, and the parcel is at MAP 316A, lots 68 and 67, in part of Pinehurst Avenue. And this is to release $12,000.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 779 is to accept a grant of scenic and conservation easement from Bendigo Beach LLC. The town hereby accepts the easement listed below. It's, the grantor is Bendigo Beach. It's a scenic and conservation easement at 2 Bendigo Road, Amagansett. And the reviewing agency is the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 780 is to accept a grant of scenic and conservation easement at 15 Bay Inlet Road. And this is a, the grantor is Jason and Ashley Liebaff. And this is also, the reviewing agency is also the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 781 is to approve a refund check for a special event fee to Coach A Commodore. And this is for 400 in application fees and $500 in permit fees.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 2025-782 is to amend Resolution 2025-718 to correct the budget line. Second. All in favor.
Aye. I have Resolution 2025-783. This is a notice of public hearing for water quality grant award for round one of 2025 for the NAPB Camping Club, Camping, Camping Club IA upgrade. This is a wastewater treatment improvement, installation of community IA sanitary system of greatest pools, existing flow of 5,700 gallons per day. The funding award is potentially at $375,000. The public hearing will be held on June 5th, 2025, at 6:00 PM.
Second. All in favor.
Aye. I also have Resolution 784. This is a resolution to adopt CPF policy regarding funding for grounds made for historical properties under New York State Town Law 64E.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
I have Resolution 785, and this is to appoint temporary office assistant in the Building Department. Resolve that Jasmine Goraren is appointed to the position of temporary office assistant in the Building Department at the hourly rate of $25.05 upon, I'm sorry, for a 90-day period beginning May 27th, 2025, and ending on August 25th, 2025.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 786 is to promote Andrew Nimmo to Police Sergeant in the East Hampton Town Police Department. Suffolk County Civil Service has given an examination for Sergeant, and Andrew Nimmo is reachable on said list. Chief Michael Sarlo has presented a recommendation to the Town Board to promote Andrew to the position of Police Sergeant. The Town Board supports the recommendation. Andrew Nimmo is hereby appointed to the position of Police Sergeant in the East Hampton Town Police Department at the annual salary of $162,380.87 effective June 1st, 2025.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
Yeah. That's, that's the next resolution I'm going to do.
Just by chance, right?
It's awesome.
Well, that was meant to be.
What?
By the way, yeah. You might want to fix your hair.
That's very funny. Come on in.
Welcome, Officer Nimmo. I mean, I'm sorry, welcome Pat Royal. We're good. So I'm just about to offer Resolution 2025-787 to promote Patrick Royal to Police Sergeant in the East Hampton Town Police Department. Whereas the Suffolk County Civil Service has given an examination for Sergeant, and Patrick Royal is reachable on said list. And whereas Chief Michael Sarlo has presented a recommendation to the Town Board to promote Patrick Royal to the position of Police Sergeant, and whereas the Town Board has discussed this promotion and supports the recommendation of Chief Sarlo, now therefore be it resolved that Patrick Royal is, Royal is hereby appointed to the position of Police Sergeant in the East Hampton Town Police Department at the annual salary of $162,380.87 effective June 1st, 2025.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Sergeant.
And we look forward to swearing you in on June 5th.
I look forward to it as well. Thank you for calling in.
Yes, thank you. It doesn't usually happen. Be well. Resolution 2025-788 is for professional services, graphic design for the Town of East Hampton Newsletter. Carrie Lampeter Communications is hereby retained to provide professional graphic design services as set forth in her proposal in an amount not to exceed $1,500 for each quarterly newsletter.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Okay, so that's all of the business we have for today. And now I, like, I reckon, I'm sorry, a motion to go into exec session.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for CPF, personnel, real estate, litigation, and advice of council.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everyone, and thank you, LTV.